Welcome to another episode of the brand called you. A broadcast and podcast show that brings you leadership lessons, knowledge, experience and wisdom from thousands of successful individuals from around the world. I am your host Ashutosh Garg and today I am privileged to welcome a very senior, a very tall corporate leader, a very successful entrepreneur from Hyderabad, India, Mr. Murli Bukapatnam. Murli, welcome to the show.
Thank you, Ashutosh. Very kind of you to invite me onto your show. I'm super thrilled and more than being thrilled, I am privileged, I must say.
Thank you.
I don't know if I deserve even the one quarter of the.
No, no, you deserve much more. You deserve much more. Murli is the chairman of the global board of trustees of Thai, which is the Indus Entrepreneurs. And as I have often told you, I'm a charter member of Thai. So it's a privilege to have the chairman of the global war of trustees of Thai. And when he wears his entrepreneurial hat, Murli is the founder and chairman of Foxi Technologies, which is a venture development firm that has incubated and scaled multiple startups. So Murli, we're going to speak today about Thai and we're going to speak about your Foxi Technologies. But before there are a few questions for you. You had a dynamic journey across the US and India. What sparked your entrepreneurial spirit in the early years?
Um, Ashutosh, that's a, that's a great question. I must give you a bit of a background about my upbringing.
Yeah.
Um, and uh, my dad is a professor in mathematics and my mom, a homemaker. I come from a small rural town called Hindipur in Anandapur district of Andhra Pradesh.
Yeah.
How many people can recognize the fact that I am right next to Lepakshi, which Honorable Prime Minister recently visited.
Yeah.
So that's the background I come from.
Hmm.
But the, the reason I'm telling you this story is because my dad, even though he was an educator, he never kept, could kept quiet, right? Um, in the very early ages, he started a bar and restaurant, the only bar and restaurant in my hometown.
Hmm.
Because he wanted to make sure that, you know, he, he, he does something beyond.
Yeah.
Right? Um, but about, I mean, we could influence it to keep it as the only establishment in the town for a while.
Hmm.
Then at some point of time, he felt the conflict between educating and alcohol. So he sold the, the bar and restaurant. Then we got into another industry of aluminium utensils, right? Um, a small scale industry. So I think observing him, talking to him and seeing his friends. Um, I think that was somewhere latently, you know, present in my DNA about trying to be an entrepreneur. Um, so when I went to US and I got, I guess, bit of settlement happened in my life.
Hmm.
The next eventual thing happened was he trying to become an entrepreneur.
So that's fascinating. How fascinating. And, and as someone who's built companies across borders, what in your view have been some of the most striking cultural differences in the startup ecosystems you've observed? And you know, from Silicon Valley or the Bay Area to now what you see in India today?
No, actually, that's a great question, Ashutosh, because I always say that I have two mothers, right? Um, one mother which has given me birth, birth and that is the mother India and the land of Bharat, right? And the other, the, the land of melting pot, which is the, the USA, right? Um, the one mother which has brought me up.
Correct.
And has taught me the, um, the culture, the fitness, the maturity is the USA.
Hmm.
Then the entrepreneurial culture, I think it is in the DNA of, you know, just the ecosystem, the air we breathe.
Hmm.
Um, I'll give you a very small example. Um, in nineteen ninety-eight or nineteen ninety-nine, if I remember correctly, is when I first started my services company, Ashutosh.
Hmm.
Um, we had maybe about three or four clients and the account receivables, right? Um, and we needed cash flows and everything. Um, I, my bank, Chibichis Bank, I went to them and asked for, hey, um, I want to apply for a line of credit.
Hmm.
The bank manager, the, at the branch level, he asked me, uh, do you use any financial platform? I said, yeah, QuickBooks is what I use. Um, can you just print out a aging summary and just bring it to me?
Hmm.
I don't believe it. In thirty minutes of me submitting that, my line of credit was approved for three hundred thousand dollars.
Amazing.
So that, I'm, I'm pointing this out to differentiate the culture from an entrepreneurial point of view between India and US.
Yeah, yeah.
You go to your coffee shop and you, you know, explain a business idea on a napkin. Um, and if the idea is good and the, the, there is a potential, you have angel investments, angel investors who are willing to write a twenty-five thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollar checks and talk about those days.
Hmm.
In India, that is not the case, right? I mean, it's still, um, the financial institutions require a lot of background checks, you know, of paperwork, a write from your company registration documents to your documents, PF, all kinds of stuff is there.
Hmm.
But they, on the positive side, what has changed is in the cities like Gurgaon, Bangalore, if you were to sit in a third wave of coffee job and if you are presenting an idea on a napkin, there are angel investors who are willing to write a fifty lakh to one crore cheque.
Absolutely.
So that is the cultural differences that I see when I travel to, you know, Silicon Valley or Washington or in the other parts of the Indian cities, Ashutosh.
What a great response. Thank you. And how have your own personal values influenced your choice of ventures? Especially because you have focused a lot on underserved communities.
Yeah, so I have to give you one more story of my childhood.
Please, please.
Um, I had a, as a child, I was a bit of a chubby, chubby kid. Um, I had a Ayama, um, you know, who is to carry me all along.
Hmm.
Um, her name is Anamakka, Akka's sister, and we call her Anamakka, Anuma, Anamakka.
Hmm.
And when I, um, you know, traveled, was about to travel to US. Uh, so she came to me in a very endearing manner and said, Babu, so you know, for a kid you call Babu.
Yeah.
Babu, my only desire is one day you take me in a helicopter, right? Um, you've become so big now, you're, I mean, so imagine me have a rural background, going uh, to US, crossing the seven seas, so to speak.
Hmm.
But then I, when I came back or when I was settled, I was thinking, we have changed, right? We have moved from one segment of economic ladder to another economic ladder, right? But these people have stayed there only, right? When I went back and visited them, their families are still struggling to do it.
Hmm.
My first call was that, how can I change that element of lifestyle? Can I increase them from a three thousand or a four thousand or a five thousand rupee per month salary to at least about ten thousand or twelve thousand rupee salary? And if we afford an helicopter ride, their lifestyle will become much better.
Yeah.
That was the, my value system in which, when I chose the underserving markets to be the Ashutosh.
Amazing.
My.
Fascinating, fascinating. And you know, if all of us start to think like that, we can change the, the whole country completely. Murli, let's now talk about the Indus Entrepreneurs or Thai. You're the chairman of the global board of trustees. For my viewers and listeners, I'm going to ask you, what is the vision you are driving as chairman? But also tell me, what is Thai?
Um, so, actually, let me answer your second question first, right? Um, Thai, uh, an organization started in nineteen ninety-two, right? About a group of seven individuals came together and said that we need to come together um, so that the glass ceiling, so to, the proverbial glass ceiling can be broken.
Hmm.
These are the markets, these are the times in which getting a VC funding was so difficult, right? Taking a company public was so difficult, right? Um, even to become a CEO of an organization was unthinkable for a, a, a person of Indian origin or Indus.
Yeah.
Region, right? How do you shatter that, right? I mean, so they used to meet regularly every month. Then after four, five months of meeting, they realized that there is a much larger need. Well, so they organized a, a event called Taikon. Hmm. And amazingly, they were expecting about two hundred, three hundred people, but about seven hundred to eight hundred people showed up.
Hmm.
Like one valley and that's the, the birth of a movement, what we call today, right? The, the whole philosophical framework for Thai, Ashutosh, is to how do we create a virtuous cycle of wealth?
Hmm.
By fostering entrepreneurship. So we want to create a virtual cycle of wealth. So that means the net takers will become net givers.
Hmm.
So it is the cycle of, you know, that kind of a mentoring, networking, acceleration, funding, right? So that is the philosophical framework of Thai.
Hmm.
And we would, um, I mean, I'm fortunate, I'm blessed that I have a set of leaders along with me, ten others from various, um, you know, backgrounds, um, who are shaping the vision of Thai for the, you know, years to come.
Hmm.
We would really like to keep entrepreneur right in the center as a focus.
Right.
In everything we do, so that we do, how do we bring back that vision of keeping entrepreneur right in the center, right? From, um, how do we create impact? Can Thai be known for the impact creating organizations, right? Can we go down to the underserving markets where entrepreneurship is still required, right? Move away from these urban centers where entrepreneurship is already thriving? But can we go to the, um, other cities where entrepreneurship is not there? Or it is still there in a latent stage, but can we accelerate that moment? The way these founders thought about, um, you know, about thirty-three years ago. So that is, and that is the philosophical framework of Thai. Um, you know, virtuous cycle of wealth creation by fostering entrepreneurship.
Correct, correct. And what is the vision you are driving in your term as chairman?
So, um, again, a great question, Ashutosh. Particularly, I mean, again, as I said, Thai is a movement, right? And Thai has to be a movement and instead of creating a, you know, reinventing the wheel per se.
Hmm.
Last year, um, we had, you know, a huge conversation or a session led by Pramath Sinha. Hmm. Um, on the entire strategy and what I should evolve into it. And we worked with one of the top five firms, create that strategy document. And so as I said, the vision is to be present in as many geographical locations as possible. Be at the table of the policymakers.
Hmm.
Um, public policy has to be a very important, um, avenue for Thai to advocate on the um, across the geographies, right? And how do we become the voice of entrepreneur?
Hmm.
So that is the, the vision with which we are driving, that is my personal vision. We need to, we need to be the voice of entrepreneur.
Absolutely. And Murli, Thai has a very strong legacy of mentorship. How are you reimagining mentorship in today's startup world?
No, no, so, uh, again, a, a, a question which is very close to my heart, right? Um, Ashutosh, see today, there are a lot of people who use the word mentor for everything and.
Absolutely.
Right?
Hmm.
Um, India is such a strong legacy of Guru Sishya Parampara, right? And that ought to be the center of, uh, this mentorship, right? Mentorship has to be without expectations.
Correct.
Mentorship is about listening, right? Mentorship is about nurturing the, the leader, the, the leadership qualities of that founder, right? Not about your supremacy, not about your legacy, not about what you have done or what you want from this thing.
Hmm.
But can you be there when the founder wants you to be there?
Hmm.
And be that lending ear and share your experiences.
Hmm.
Actually, before you, um, you know, we started this, we were discussing about how we are part of forums and cohorts, right? One of the things which we learn is how to be a good listener, right? Not be opinionated, not be biased, um, how can we be that? If mentor can imbibe those qualities, right? How to be unbiased and an active listener?
Hmm.
Or the founder, then you become, so that for me is the greatest mentoring activity.
Hmm.
I, um, I follow this, um, uh, to the core element of what I believe in. And that is what we are driving as a mentoring activity.
Very interesting, very interesting. And, uh, you know, you were telling me a little while ago about, uh, you know, when you went to Silicon Valley and how easy it was and how things are beginning to change here. My question is, what do you see as the biggest challenges facing the startup ecosystems today? And how, how is Thai helping to address these challenges?
See, um, go to market is a biggest, um, challenge for any entrepreneur across the geographies.
Yeah.
Right, Ashutosh? I mean, we all, um, uh, you know, uh, get romanticized by the word entrepreneurship, right?
Hmm.
Um, and, and, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that many of your viewers have fallen in love multiple times.
Hmm.
Um, and when they have fallen in love, they do need to chase.
Correct.
Um, uh, and multiple times.
Yeah.
And it is not easy, right?
Like.
And to be in love for a, a long period of time, right? Um, facing those hardships, right? And for me, one of that element is the, the go-to-market, right? Um, you may have fallen in love with the product or the service.
Hmm.
How do you take that product or service to the market to ensure that someone is in the market who is willing to pay for that product or service?
Hmm.
And Thai, um, uh, we have a couple of programs which we enable that, right? Uh, we have a beautiful global program called Thai Nurture, um, in which it's a very hard program. It's like in a super duper accelerator program.
Hmm.
They have the practitioners of who is who, right? I mean, uh, Anandesh Pandey of Persistence System, right? Uh, Shantanu of Bombay Shaving Company, Kiran Deshpande of Mokyo. These are all the teachers of that program, right? Who come and help these young entrepreneurs understand and understand the, that design thinking behind it. You know, the go-to-market aspect. So we have a similar programs, um, in the Silicon Valley, we have a scale-up in Boston, right? How do you, uh, you know, this is the methods and means in which we enable entrepreneurs to be fallen in love and to continue to be in love, right? Not get disheartened, um, you know, when, when they hear a no. But hey, how do I take that no and try to convert that into a right product or service to make sure that, you know, um, I, I am still in love with my product and service which.
Right. I love this example of falling in love with your entrepreneurial dream and doing it multiple times. What a great example. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashutosh.
Uh, you also, you just mentioned very briefly about a few individuals. Some of them have been on my program. But Thai's big strength is this very, very senior entrepreneurs and aspiring entrepreneurs.
Correct.
What are your thoughts on fostering intergenerational dialogue? If I can use this term, between people who have been there, done it and people who want to get there?
No, no, absolutely. I don't know. Uh, Ashutosh, I, I, I somehow feel that maybe you hacked into my laptop or our board meetings. Uh, because Thai is at the global board, we are discussing about a, a membership category, uh, and I want to make sure that your viewers understand that membership is just a means for us to achieve our.
Correct.
Use, um, where we bring in this intergenerational entrepreneurs into the fold. Because the essence of Thai, right? The essence of Thai is to take the net takers and convert them into net givers.
Correct.
Transformation journey.
Hmm.
The transformation journey, there, there is this intergenerational entrepreneurs who are neither net givers nor net takers. They are there to, on their own journey to, you know, go to a level, right?
Hmm.
They have moved, they have transformed themselves from net takers, but they have yet to come to the net givers.
Right.
To be addressed that. So we are, um, you know, in a serious deliberations right now to how do we engage uh, this intergenerational, Thai Silicon Valley has done a fantastic job.
Hmm.
Uh, creating a group called CXOs, um, because many of the founders are CXOs.
Hmm.
And Delhi has done a good job at, um, called the Founder's Circle, getting them into the, the fold, um, um, in that transformational journey of their own, right? Um, Rajasthan is the other chapter which is, you know, dabbling in that, right? So we are, um, absolutely in that mode and probably in next.
Interesting.
If by days you will see a bigger advancement on, on the, uh, that element of it, Ashutosh.
Yeah. And I must, I must tell you that in my own small way, I have mentored a few Thai mentees. Um, you know, who are startup entrepreneurs. But my next question, Murli, is that there is this big push towards getting more women entrepreneurs and I know Thai is wanting to do much more. How are you looking at including more women entrepreneurs? And a lot of the under-representative communities, if you'll allow me to use that word?
No, no, uh, again, a, a, a great question.
And I promise I haven't looked at any presentation on your.
Now, first and foremost, thank you for mentoring the young startups, Ashutosh, and their person like you with so much of experience. Um, both from your professional plus your entrepreneurial journey. And you know, giving that knowledge sharing is what makes this entire journey of entrepreneurship.
Absolutely.
Right? Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Again, um, see Thai woman is one of our flagship programs from a global perspective.
Hmm.
Today, uh, we have more than forty-five countries where we do not even have a chapter. So for example, we have a lady in Brazil volunteering to be a lead for our Thai woman program and got almost about twelve to fifteen entrepreneurs participate in your Thai woman program.
Hmm.
Where, um, this is not just a business plan competition, but is almost about a seventeen-week intervention um, on the, the entrepreneurs, uh, trying to become a better entrepreneurs.
Hmm.
And then we, uh, bring them to the Thai Global Summit, uh, as a, their semi-finals and finals.
Hmm.
So almost, um, this is a spectacle to watch. Um, I'm requesting the entrepreneurs and the viewers who are watching it.
Yeah.
They should make themselves available at the Thai Global Summit and this year, Raypor, uh, from December third to fifth. I'm plugging that in there.
Hmm.
Uh, but, uh, on the third, there are going to be semi-finals of Thai women. So get to see the energy, the, I mean, I am so excited when I hear
Hmm.
with this young woman talking about what they're trying to create. Uh, entrepreneurial ventures, be it in healthcare, be it nutrition space, right? Um, I got to, uh, digital space transformation, right? I heard a couple of presentations last year in Bangalore. I was, you know, spellbound.
Hmm.
And I mean, it was just amazing to hear. Same that, uh, a woman entrepreneur from Houston, I heard in Singapore a year before, right? In twenty twenty-three, oh my God, it's so fantastic. So, um, we have a couple of large, um, you know, donors. Uh, one is, um, Asha Jadeja Motwani from, through her foundation.
Hmm.
She supports about, um, you know, um, good set of women entrepreneurs year on year.
Hmm.
To bring, enable this. And we have another gentleman called Subbu Kotta from Thai Boston.
Hmm.
Um, he's a sponsor and enables us to give these grants to the, um, you know, winners and the runners-up of this program from Thai women so that they can pass on. But, um, uh, I kid you not, Ashutosh, everyone who has come and presented, um, at least some of them have gotten a million dollar checks from the VCs who were present.
Wow.
So that's the, uh, kind of enablement that Thai woman has done. Today, we are a close to ten thousand member community.
Hmm.
Uh, we have an active LinkedIn page, uh, where they, uh, we did a lot of WhatsApp groups which we do it.
Hmm.
A little way of, a long way to go, but.
It's a great start.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, one more question relating to Thai and then I have a few questions on Foxi Technologies.
Okay.
As the chairman of the global board of Thai, what is your message to global investors about startups emerging from tier-two and tier-three cities in India?
Uh, I, I recently had an interview with both, uh, Statesman and Telegraph, right? Uh, I said the same thing.
Hmm.
Global investors must come to India, they must look at the entrepreneurs in the two, tier-three, tier-four cities.
Hmm.
If they don't, it is their loss.
Correct.
I mean, the kind of entrepreneurs who I meet when I travel to Vadodara, Surat, Chandigarh, Mangalore. My God, it is a mind-boggling kind of innovations and entrepreneurial activity.
Hmm.
Personally, I'm getting to witness, right? Uh, the energy is at a different level.
Hmm.
Um, they want to do something and they want to, um, it's not about, uh, you know, they want to earn money, right? They really want to solve a problem which they have identified, right? Talking to entrepreneurs from Bhubaneswar, right? Um, I mean, these are the areas where you wouldn't think that are a entrepreneurial activity, Nizamabad, right? Um, so this, I mean, the towns which you would not normally think that.
Hmm.
Uh, you know, VCs got to hear and VCs have to hear.
Yeah.
The activities, my God. So my call to all the global VCs and the investors, you are an angel investor, you are a VC, you are a CD. Please look at India, please look at tier-two, tier-three, tier-four cities in India. And that is where you're going to find the diamonds in rough.
Absolutely.
You're, you're, you, you will be a D-Biers of, you know, championing entrepreneurship one day.
Fascinating. And I completely endorse everything that you've said so far. But let's now talk about your company, Foxi Technologies, which is building ventures from ground up. You have incubated startups like Prowidaw and House Care. What is your, what is your process for identifying high potential ideas?
So, um, uh, I must tell you and I must confess, it's all me being an entrepreneur, right?
Yeah.
Um, my ideas, these are the, see, one of the biggest opportunities when you identify a problem, right? And when you can resonate with that problem, right? Um, and if you can resonate with a problem and if you have the will to solve that problem. Um, so the whole idea of Foxi Technologies has been and shall be is to identify those opportunities.
Hmm.
So far, it has been, uh, the problems which I haven't identified. But what I've done is I've gone and created the teams. I bought the people who I felt, I cannot do it, right? Um, but can I build a team around it and empower them by giving them the market salaries? I'm not trying to tell them, oh, please work, come and work for an E-SO. I'll give them get salaries. Plus, I give them a generous equity in the, that special purpose vehicle which we have created for that particular thing.
Hmm.
The, um, but the only thing which I'm very strict about is I give them a six months' time to, um, create some revenue. So the go-to-market is very essential for me.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that you need to break even, you need to be profitable, you know, do. Can you go earn hundred rupees?
Hmm.
Yeah, can, so which means that your product, your service, whatever, you are tuned to a level where someone else is out in the market is willing to pay for it.
Correct.
It can comes up the, the scale up, all those things. So far, that has been the case.
Hmm.
But, um, would love to, you know, if there is a good idea by some other entrepreneur trying to, can, do, shall do in the, in the coming days.
Well said. Time for two more questions for you. What role does failure play in Foxi's philosophy of venture building?
So for every failure, if I can open my shirt, I saw you do the huge scars on my face, my body. Where are these scars coming?
I know, I know.
Uh, so, um, but, um, that is not a deterrent for me. Um, and I think that just goes back to, uh, my long-drawn value that, um, of entrepreneurship, right? Um, it makes me stay grounded, one, right? Failure, uh, failure is the, uh, essential part of my learning, right? Um, if you don't have failures, um, you will not learn, you will not become a better person, right? Um, um, I'll go back to the, the previous example, right? If you want to be a good, um, you know, boyfriend or a girlfriend, um, I, I think a love failure is a.
Yeah.
Then you, you become mature and you, you reflect. It gives you a moment to pause. A moment to pause and reflect, what did I do wrong? For that, I will correct it and I will take the course correction. And that's what I've done, Ashish.
Amazing. And my last question for you. Tell me about a success story from Foxi that particularly stands out for you and why?
So you started a question with an underprivileged and underserved market which I've gone about. So today, one of the ventures in Foxi, we have trained about close to thirty thousand plus rural folks and created an employment for them, right? Enabling that journey, right? And doing a bit of a technology innovation, I have, I personally have a patent in creating that marketplace dynamics for that piece of enablement is something which I'm absolutely proud of. That is something very dear to my heart. Because as a growing country, Ashish, India with this huge, you know, population challenge, right? Between Bharat and India, if you can address the issues of Bharat at some level.
Yeah.
I think that will, that will.
Absolutely.
So that's, that's my.
Absolutely. And on that note, Moody, thank you. And on that note, I just want to say, what an amazing conversation this has been. I mean, you know, starting with your incredible journey and what really, your story from your father's entrepreneurial spirit that seemed to have sparked your entrepreneurial journey to everything that you did in, 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 in America. We had a fascinating conversation on Thai. Loved your vision as the chairman of the global board of trustees of Thai. We covered a lot of ground and I really think Thai as an organization or as an institution is waiting. While it has done a lot for entrepreneurs, it is now waiting to blossom into something which is truly global, truly large and which will benefit a huge number of entrepreneurs, young, aspiring, aspirational, whatever you want to call them. Thank you also for talking to me briefly about Foxi Technologies. I don't think we did enough justice to the amazing work you are doing to support as so many startups. But that will leave for another conversation. Thank you, Moody, for speaking to us and good luck to you.
Thank you and thanks for hosting me. The whole idea of Thai would be to create a million entrepreneurs in a very short period of time. Let's, Godspeed and I, I look forward blessings from friends like you to ensure that we do accomplish what we want. Thanks for having me on your show, fantastic, had a great conversation. It, it just felt like, you know, talking to a friend who I've known for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you for listening to The Brand Called You, videocast and podcast. A platform that brings you knowledge, experience and wisdom of hundreds of successful individuals from around the world. Do visit our website, www.tbcy.in to watch and listen to the stories of many more individuals. You can also follow us on YouTube, Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. Just search for The Brand Called You.